It may be a technical problem, but it's an actual problem. We don't have the town planner we could manage, but we don't have Pam Harding Barrett, whom I'm expecting to join us remotely. You might remember at the last meeting she was on somebody's laptop over there and we're expecting her to be on the laptop for this meeting also. So we'll unadjourn informally for a moment and see if they appear and we can get started properly. Okay, now the meeting is opened again. The first part of the meeting is for public comment. If you're here and you wish to speak on something that's not on our agenda, now is the time. And I'd like to remind everybody at any point in the meeting that you wish to speak, you have to speak to an issue that is on the agenda and you need to come to speak to the microphone right over there. You can't speak from your seat because that microphone is tied to the television and the idea is it's a public meeting and that way all the members of the public who want to follow the meeting can hear everybody who's speaking. So when you speak, please go first to the microphone, state your name and the reason that you're going to come speak, and that will be very helpful to us. Is there anyone who would like to make some sort of public comment?
If it's concerning with Santos.
No, no, that is on the agenda, so this is not the time for that. I didn't make myself clear. That will come. Yeah, that's okay. So hearing no public comments, the minutes, Paul.
Last week we deferred the minutes of June 22nd for discussion with the new recording secretary. I communicated back and forth with her and I propose we accept the minutes as modified tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to welcome Sarah June Connon, I think her name is pronounced, who is our new recording secretary and starting out doing a really good job. Okay, the first thing on our agenda now is a request for a release of covenant for Dillon's Way. Who is going to speak to that?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. Ms. Putnam?
Yes. Good evening, Rebecca Putnam. I'm the broker representing Cape Cod Development on Dillon's Way.
Would you like?
So we are requesting, I guess the town engineering has sent you folks the numbers that they came up with for a bond.
They did.
And so we are requesting that all six lots be released with either a tripartee or an actual bond, but we would like to have the option of either/or, as we currently have a tripartee bond set for Faith's Way currently, which we're finishing up now.
You do have that?
Yeah, on Faith's Way we do.
Okay, and is that for the amount that the engineering department suggested?
It was the amount that this board came up with last, when, for Faith's Way. So it's set aside in a bank account. You guys released, you did sign a release for the lots on Faith's Way based on the fact that we put some money into an account.
Okay.
I'm not sure at what point that was, but...
I'm not either, so I'd like to hear more about that.
So, evening. So to the point of releasing five lots, or all six lots.
Right.
The original request was for several lots with some different surety, but with the proper surety in place, it's fine to release all six lots if the board agrees to that surety amount. I'm trying to find Pam and bring her into the meeting here as well, and she's topping up my screen. I don't really know anything about Faith's Ways.
It may have been before you were here, Tom.
So the surety amount that has been identified by the engineering division, it's well within the board's purview tonight to say, "We agree to release the lots based on this surety." And we and the applicant will sort out whether we're transferring some surety from some other project or going to require some additional, because frankly, I don't know what the status is.
We're not asking to use what we have for Faith's Way. We will, what we just want is the option to either to do the bond for the $111,820.54 as an actual bond or be able to set it into an account with the town's name attached to it. We just want to have the either/or option.
Yeah, so, and you can come back and change that surety mechanism as well. It just has to be one of those things. So with that in mind, if the board and the applicant are comfortable with the bond amount and the board wants to vote to release those lots based on that surety, we'll put that into work on our side. The lots don't get released until we have the surety in hand. So with the board's vote, we'll get busy with Rebecca and company and John and sorting out where those funds are at. If there's some money that's, so that's the mechanism. Board's comfortable, you vote, and we work out covering that bond amount. But just to note that the lots, you don't get a building tomorrow because the board voted tonight. It's when that surety is...
I understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands.
And I want to make sure the board knows where we are. Did everyone got, get the memo about the amount?
Yeah.
That the engineer said is the right amount, and it is the $111,820.54. So are we ready for a motion to...
I have a question.
Oh.
One of the papers here say the total amount of work to be done is $92,000 and was signed by Mr. Drooly. Were the engineers asked if it's the same?
It came to us.
I didn't see that.
Oh, we have, yeah.
I don't have that.
Came in your email.
It was in an email.
And we received that email today.
Paul, here's a copy.
I did not see that. What's the amount?
It's the same amount that we're saying, the $111,820.54.
It's pretty close.
I will move that the bond, that the board will accept the $111,820.54 whether it is via bond or cash to the town's benefit.
I think we need a motion to release lots one to six.
One to six, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, because it has to be upon receipt of this surety.
Right.
I think we set out.
Under cash. Understood.
Understood.
That's what I heard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm glad if I'm straightened out. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing, and we're going to be discussing a project that's been underway for a long time with the, at least four years, with the planning board for the recodification of our entire bylaw. And I want to show you, because I know the board and Tom and Jeb are familiar with it, this is, oh, it's a little note from me, but this is our bylaw. That's how thick it is. It's been growing for years. It's been recodified, I think, at least once, maybe more than that, across the years, because as it grows, it gets disorganized, and it's been straightened out a few times. For the last four years, we've been working to straighten it out again, and really what that means is instead of the table of contents that it has now, it's been reorganized into a new table of contents that we think makes it easier for people to understand what the bylaws are and to find what they're looking for and what they need in a convenient way. The goal was not to change the bylaw.
No.
So it's the same stuff in a new format. That's the idea with a few little wrinkles to it, because it had to be updated to state law, so those changes were made, and a few things were dropped out of it because they're antiquated. But other than that, we hoped we would be able to go to town meeting this November and say that the newly recodified bylaw does not make changes, it recodifies it, and making changes that we know are overdue will be phase two. We'll be working on that, but that's not what this is. This is a reorganization, and we're going to have a presentation on that to go through it, so please bear with us.
I'm chair. I may want to mention that there's been a series of public hearings and public comment from attorneys and others on this whole process.
Yes, there have.
Over the long period of time.
Could you all hear that? The bylaw has been shared, we felt widely, with people like Mr. Hammett, who's before us frequently, I believe with Mr. McGrath had an opportunity to look at it. No, people who use it have been looking at it and trying to help us to make sure that we really are getting this right. It may not, Laura Moynihan, just a number of people, so. The two consultants have been Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell.
All righty, if I may. So with apologies, it's been, it's been an interesting day, just your standard day for a town planner, but, so we have, we had a bit of a scheduling conflict with Bob, so they're with us on our screen. However, our screen is just hideous to try and find people in it. So, but I don't think it's necessary for Bob and Bob to see us quite so well. So as Charlotte pointed out, in the previous, under the previous administration, under the guidance of Brian Curry, we started on this process to recodify the zoning bylaw. And we have hired Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell, both esteemed people in their field. Bob's an attorney, Bob Ritchie is an attorney, and Bob Mitchell is a planner, and so they have been working through our bylaw. And Bob Ritchie does a great example of talking about how moving stuff from one house to another and not having something fall off the truck. I don't know if we're going to get Bob Ritchie's moving things in a truck story tonight, but essentially, the idea for the recodification is to put it into a format that's more readable, that's more understandable, it's easier to follow. Some sections of the bylaw have been deleted, some sections of the bylaw have been reworked, some things, there's been some modest language changes to it. And with those changes, it's sort of like if you've ever done a renovation on an old house, and you got into things and you pulled out the wall and you went, "Oh, that's not what I was expecting to see there. We're going to have to, you know, bring a bit more than just putty and paint to this structure." So in the midst of working through the bylaw, it went from a simple recodification, reordering, renumbering, to fixing some of these problematic parts of the bylaw. And with that, when we send it to the Attorney General, the Attorney General's going to be reviewing the entire bylaw in its entirety. As we just heard today, we got back the results from the Attorney General that said the things we passed at town meeting in April, which actually happened in July, have passed muster. The Attorney General has 90 days to work through those changes. So the entirety of our bylaw will be reviewed by the Attorney General, and this has been identified as, originally as a recodification, but we had so many things that turned up, we just started making a list of additional things that had to be fixed. So in the conversations that we had with builders, with legal counsel, we generated a 64-page matrix and went through those changes in the bylaw, some of which were incorporated, some of which are rejected, some of which were identified as more of a phase-two change to the bylaw. And so where we're at right now is we have the document that we have been editing. It is the final version of it as of now, but the final version for the hearing, anything that comes up during the midst of our hearings, we'll also be moving to edit those things and incorporate those things into the final drafts. So we are having a hearing tonight. We anticipate continuing it until the 12th and likely the 26th of October to make sure we hit all those stops prior to bringing it to town meeting. Bob and Bob are scheduled to be here at our town meeting in Falmouth to help with some technical questions, but as Bob and Bob point out on a pretty regular basis, it's our bylaw, this is our initiative, and it's up to us to really talk about those things that, and the reasons why we got into that. So with that, I'll be happy to turn it over to either of the Bobs if you want to talk about a bit of the process. I'm a little nervous with, with black screens up there. I'm hoping you guys are still with me. There's a mute off, that's a good sign. Thank you, Bob.
Tom, how much of the bylaw did you send to the Attorney General already?
We have sent, we have not sent anything to the Attorney General of the current recodification because that hasn't been voted on. But I can tell you that Bob and Bob have had some conversations with folks in the Attorney General's office about the nature of what we're doing, and like I said, feel free to correct me on any of the things that I might have misstated, Bob.
Well, thanks, Tom. First, I just want to, as, before we talk about the bylaw, I just want to say Bob Ritchie and I are having a hard time hearing what is being said on the dais by the planning board. It's very, very muddy sound that's coming across our computers anyway, and so we're not really clear what's being said.
All righty. Sorry about that, Bob. I just cranked up the volume on my side, and hopefully that'll help you a little on your side.
Okay, so, you know, just following up and providing a little more detail, but one thing I do want to add is when we were originally hired by Falmouth, the project really had two parts. One was to look at recodifying the bylaw, and I'll talk about that a little bit in terms of what that actually means, which, you know, mostly has to do with format and organization and really the foundation of the bylaw and how it's laid out, you know, the use of fonts and spacing and headings and titles and the numbering system and how information is organized. But we were also asked to look at three additional topics to start with, and as Tom has mentioned, we, as we've gone through this with the working group and others, various topics have come up along the way that needed some attention. But originally, we were asked to look at the definition section of the bylaw, and there were a number of definitions that were felt that needed to either be revised or added, and we found a number of definitions that should be added because they were missing, and they were missing in terms of, there was specific state law, state statute language that really needed to be identified in the bylaw as to the meaning of those terms, and those included some of the agricultural definitions that we put in and definitions related to childcare and family daycare and adult daycare, all of which were missing. But most of the definitions that are in the new draft bylaw aren't existing definitions from your current bylaw. The second topic was the list of uses in each of the zoning districts that are allowed or not allowed, or how they're allowed, by whom? Do they go to the special, do they go to the zoning board of appeals for approval or the planning board? Right now, that language is kind of scattered all around your bylaw, and it's in paragraphs or it's in some scattered list, but it's not in any cohesive one section. And it's normal for zoning bylaws to have a use table section, and that's what we've done. We've put all of that material into tables. It's remarkably easier to read and understand and follow and find what you're looking for when that kind of information is in tables and not in various paragraphs and scattered in various places. So each of the different zoning categories, all of the residential zoning districts...
What you doing?
And, yep. Hello?
You're with us, Bob.
Oh, okay.
Somebody else's machine. Go ahead, go right ahead, you got the floor.
I was hearing voices. So we've put all of the uses in lists, and within each second, each section, those lists are alphabetized, which is another technique used to help people easily find what they're looking for, alphabetizing lists. So each of the different zoning categories, residential, industrial, business, and whatnot. Now, all the lists, all of those have a table where you have all the different uses listed. Some of the uses in your bylaw have standards and conditions they have to meet. Those standards and conditions are now associated directly next to the uses, and then the next columns tell you in each zoning category, is this allowed? Is it allowed by right? Is it not allowed? Is it allowed by special permit from the zoning board, or is it allowed by special permit from the planning board? Very, very easy to read, follow, and find compared to how you have it now, and all of those uses that were scattered around, all in one separate article. The zoning bylaw has articles, which are essentially the chapters of the zoning bylaw. The current bylaw has 47 separate chapters, vastly different in size and scale and what's in them, and kind of been added at the end of the bylaw over and over and over again without really any organizational structure. We have collapsed those 47 articles into 14. So like topics, as I just mentioned with the use tables, they're all in the same place. You have seven different overlay zoning districts. They're all in the same zoning article now as opposed to being scattered around. All of your regulations related to parking and landscaping are in the same article. So we took a look at the definition section, we were asked to take a look at the uses and make vast improvements there, which we think we have done. The other section we were asked to look at was the nonconforming section of the bylaw, which the current bylaw has very little language. And so we proposed a draft that to substantially beef up, if you will, the nonconforming section to reflect both state statutes and what is a fairly substantial body of law cases related to nonconforming uses and nonconformant structures in nonconforming lots. So that is probably the most substantial change, is the nonconforming article. And as we work through this with the town staff and the town, with different town planners and Frank Duffy, the town attorney, and the working group and the planning board and the zoning board members, there, the town people already knew there were a lot of substantive issues that really needed to be dealt with in this, in the bylaw, but this was phase one. Phase one was trying to get it well organized and tweak it and fix some of the, some of the topics going forward. So as we went through, we created a phase-two list, and as those items were identified, and I'll give you one example, the restaurant, restaurants in Falmouth are treated in many different ways and many different sections of the bylaw, again, kind of scattered around, and we found conflicting language and vague language, and some language that we were told is really hard to use on the part of the town boards and staff and really needs to be looked at in a more substantive, in-depth manner. That went onto the phase-two list. So we've been building a phase-two list, and as we've gone forward, the number of items that showing up on that list are getting bigger and bigger. So that list will be for future reference for the town in terms of prioritizing the items on that and what you want to take in a more substantive manner. Many of these require policy decisions on the part of the town, and so it's more appropriate to go into the phase-two list. And there are some sections that are, for a variety of reasons, are being modified or even deleted. There are some sections of the bylaw that have expired, have been expired for quite a while. Well, you don't need expired sections of the bylaw anymore, you take them out. So those are being proposed for deletion. The other thing, just in a more, more particular manner, is the bylaw, the current bylaw is full of really long paragraphs and some really long sentences, and many of those paragraphs have multiple different topics in the paragraphs. We've pulled all of those apart, and we've put as many as, we've put the separate topics in separate sections or subsections, and we've put, again, if there's lists buried in these paragraphs, we've put them into an actual list format. We have tried to use much simpler, much simpler English language where we can. It's the zoning bylaw, so there is a lot of technical legal language around zoning bylaws, but we've tried to improve the language and shorten the sentences, break up the paragraphs. We've used lots of tables, we've used color, we've put color into the tables as a way of making them easier to understand and to follow. And so we've created a new foundation, a new framework for the bylaw, and it's not only for today, but it's looking forward. So in the future, if this were to be adopted, when town meeting adopts amendments, there would be logical places for those amendments to be plugged into the new bylaw and not just tacked onto the end over and over again of the existing bylaw. And it would be easier and simpler to number those new sections to fit into an existing numbering system because each article is numbered separately and within each article there are separate numbered sections. So you don't have to renumber 100 pages every time you add an amendment to the, to the... The other thing, this is a simple thing, but it's all part of making it easier for people that read the bylaw, is the current bylaw uses Roman numerals. Well, we have put in Arabic numbers because that's what people use, and even Bob and I are saying, "Okay, now what, what number is X L V I I?" Let's, you know, you don't want to waste time doing that. You want to, you know, just look at the numbers and understand.
The Super Bowl, by the way, has helped a little bit with those Roman numerals, but only to the extent that the football fan...
So, you know, the goals here are to start building a new bylaw framework and organization structure that can last a long time in that it will begin the process of making it easier to deal with some of the more substantive topics that await further action and further discussion by the boards and staff and the citizens of Falmouth, but, and start cleaning up the language. We tweak, you know, punctuation and grammar and, again, with the goal of trying to make it just simpler, the easier and easier to understand. So that's a quick overview of the guidebook, the guidebook, I'm sorry, the Falmouth bylaw. And I guess I'll turn it back to Tom or Bob Ritchie if you wanted to jump in and add a few comments. Why don't you do that?
Tom, before, before Bob Ritchie goes ahead...
Yes, Bob, just a second.
I believe they can control the volume...
I'm on mute.
...on their own computers.
No, your summary has hit all the major points. Just to point out that the recodification that the Attorney General will review, the entire package that is ultimately sent to the Attorney General after the town meeting has voted on it, will include all of the changes that were previously adopted and sent to the Attorney General and approved. So the text, the final text will include those. The next is the Attorney General considers recodification basically... The next is the attorney general considers recodification basically to be a, a, a full review of every word within the document. And sometimes the simple relocation of, of a word from one section to another has ripple effects that create substantive changes in other areas. The bylaw has to be seen as a document with a lot of internal interconnections. So the attorney general takes a very expansive look on what is and what is not a substantive change. So, uh, recodification in the lingo of the AG's office is a full review. It's distinct from, uh, you know, surgical changes that don't implicate any other sections of the bylaw. So I just wanted to just point that out.
Um, just one final comment I wanted to make, just to emphasize a point. We've been talking about new, you know, some new language here and tweaked language there, but the reality is because this is mostly a recodification, uh, the reality is, is almost all of the language in this draft, the vast majority of all the text in this draft is the existing language from the current bylaw. Most of that language did not change at all.
Me, Charlotte.
Jim has a question.
Could you hit full screen, kick that little view corner, see if we could look at it full screen instead of a partial screen? It'd be easier for everyone to see. Thank you.
And I think the speakers can increase the volume on their own computers and it will come through.
Well, I, I, I asked, I shot a text to these fellows and I'll ask again, can you guys max the volume on your side? Cause I think we've got things maxed here as much as we can, uh, just to make it easy. Uh, so Bob is maxed out, but only on his volume. He's got plenty of miles on him otherwise.
I am maxed out.
I'm maxed out. Does that help?
It did help, yes, thank you.
Okay, so it helps a little bit in the room here. So, uh, questions from the board? I, I know that Pat and Charlotte have been along with two members of the ZBA. There are a couple of those members have come and gone as the ZBA has changed, but Pat and Charlotte have been on the working group along with members of the town boards, town council, uh, building commissioner, zoning administrator. There's been probably a core group of seven, uh, folk who've been on this throughout the process, reading, proofing, uh, and still coming up with things as, each time you read it.
Tom, one of the articles that was passed at the Springtown meeting, and I can't recall which one it was right now, but it was in the old format, newer, clearer format of listing things. I know Bob Mitchell said that will be incorporated, the new, or maybe it was Bob Ritchie, the new ones will be, that were passed, the Springtown meeting will be incorporated. It would be helpful if they put that into the new format too, where there are listings to make it simpler to use. That's just a comment. I don't know if I can do it or not.
Yeah, and so the interesting thing about, uh, this town meeting is we have an article on the floor at town meeting. We've got the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district, which is in, uh, Roman numerals X V I I I nine, I think, which is forty-nine. Uh, so we have two, we'll have two bits of language on that. Assuming that recodification passes, uh, then we get to, uh, the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district. Uh, it'll have a slightly different numbering system. So we'll be sort of, remember in the days when they had the signs on the highway in metric in English? Uh, so we may have, uh, some language for town meeting in, in both metric and English to put those new bylaw parts into, uh, into this. The only thing that's really added new is the, the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district. The other parts are incorporated in the current bylaw under definitions and site plan.
Um, I, I would just say that, um, that's not unusual, um, but the key thing is to take up the recodification first before you take up any other zoning amendments. Because if it passes, then you're going to have to have a slightly different motion for subsequent zoning amendments so that they are, you know, if adopted, they will be adopted in accordance with the new format and new numbering. If it doesn't pass, then the subsequent amendments will be acted on as if they will go into the current bylaw.
And the interesting thing is, we talked about in our last meeting, is the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district zoning, because it is housing-related, is a majority vote, majority plus one. Recodification, because it's the whole enchilada, is a two-thirds vote. So it's just the dynamics of doing zoning in Massachusetts that leads us to this, you know, uh, uh, these sort of inside baseball things that most people in the room don't care about, but this is the level that we've had to go to to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row moving this process along.
I, I don't know if this is something that, um, Bob and Bob are prepared for, but I wonder if they would be able to give examples, um, of, uh, because changes, certain types of changes were made, of change, examples of anachronisms, old language that was dropped because it really serves no purpose any longer. Could you give, so people would have a sense of what that might have been? Can you remember a few examples?
So do you, do you get the, the question, uh, Bob and Bob?
No, I did not.
So the question is, what sort of things have we taken out of our bylaw that are anachronisms that are no longer with us? Now, I know one of those things that Bob had mentioned were certain moratoriums. So we have a moratorium on building permits. We had a moratorium on wind turbines. And that moratorium on wind turbines went till 2014. Well, it's still in the bylaw and it stays in the bylaw forever until you change the bylaw. So that's one of those things that's hit the, the cutting room floor. Uh, but, uh, some additional, uh, things to that extent, uh, Bob and Bob.
Well, I'll give you a, a quick and easy one. You might remember this one. Your current bylaw only allows churches, which is obviously, uh, in violation of the United States Constitution as, as the only religious institution that's allowed. So we have deleted church and substituted religious institution in the use table that I was talking about. So it covers any religion.
Include mosques, temples, synagogues.
Well, and another that I remember that we were using sort of as our, our code for the other things that might be dropped were ice houses. We didn't have to include ice houses anywhere any longer.
There's another one, ice houses.
And that's kind of sad. I'd sort of like to keep ice houses around just for posterity, but I'm, I'm a sentimental person. Charlotte.
The other one that strikes me, uh, for a different reason that was taken out of the bylaw, is you had a use in the current, there is a use in the current bylaw called water sheds. Well, water sheds aren't a use. No one comes into town hall to get a permit to build a watershed. Watershed is an environmental aspect of, you know, uh, towns and cities, but it's not a use that you need a permit for. Um, so, uh, that was removed for, for that reason. It would, you know, be like having, uh, a permit required for rivers and streams and forests and, uh, you know, wetlands and things like that.
Paul, did you have a question?
So, uh, different kind of manner that it was inappropriately in the bylaw, but another example of something that's being proposed for deletion.
I do have a question. The improvements in the bylaw are tremendous. It's been, uh, yeoman's work by the two Bobs and by the town and a lot of people involved in subcommittee and others. My concern is how is this going to be presented to a town meeting? Cause this is over, well over a hundred pages and it's a very complex process, although the way you describe it is very simple. You've done this in different towns before. What would you suggest on presenting this to a town meeting to be able to get the point across without confusing everyone in the audience?
So do you get that, Bob?
I did not.
So given the complexity, given the complexity of the bylaw and of the list in general, uh, what are our strategies for presenting this to town meeting, to a representative town meeting in a manner that will have them understand what we've done, what the changes are, and give them some comfort level that it's okay to vote for that?
Based on your experience?
Based on your experience.
Well, um, not being all that, uh, informed about exactly how town meeting works in Falmouth, but, um, based on experiences, similarly, um, you should consider a variety of tools and techniques. Uh, one is, and I don't know if there are handouts allowed at town meeting or, you'll put on the back room or, uh, there's a, there's an email blast to town meeting members with, with attachments or whatnot, but you could have a short executive summary, basically, uh, that lists, you know, some of the goals and some of the problems, what, whatnot, and also shows some of the current problems and how they've been revised. Now, the last time we had this public hearing, uh, working with Pat, we put together a, a little PowerPoint, quick PowerPoint. And I think actually you might've shown that at a previous town meeting. I can't remember. With, you know, showing the tables and showing how we busted up long paragraphs and put them into, you know, a readable format in a list. And so if that's a possibility, and then also, I don't know, again, on town meeting floor, I think, do I recall correctly, someone told me you can't do PowerPoint presentations in Falmouth town meeting?
You can do PowerPoint presentations. You may.
So, you know, again, updating what was done previously, uh, and I think, um, that was, uh, a very quick but informative PowerPoint presentation. Uh, and that would be very helpful. And, uh, let's see, between now and town meeting, putting that kind of, putting that up on the town's website and letting people know on the web, you know, from the website that, look, there's this executive summary with a PowerPoint on town, on the website, planning, planning board website, explaining, you know, what this is about and showing you some examples of the changes and, and, and then obviously that it has to be, the whole document has to be somewhere on a link so people can look at the whole doc, document. Are you going to do, do that? Most towns do that.
Yeah, so the entire draft is on our website. Uh, and we do, uh, not only, uh, we, we do send, uh, emails to town meeting members, inviting them to the hearings they've missed. So they'll get a, 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 a link to this meeting with the time we talked about this, as well as the PowerPoint presentation. So they'll be, uh, we'll be loading their inboxes with materials in preparation of But certainly, uh, updating our PowerPoint and, uh, sort of, uh, looking at that executive summary, uh, I think are, uh, very good ideas.
Paul?
Yeah. I would think that a lot of this can be handled at the precinct meeting. If these documents are handed out and it was clearly explained at precinct meetings, people have an advance, uh, notice of what's coming. The other thing is, as mentioned with the PowerPoint, we could show the table of contents, for example, and then pick three or four or more examples of what was there and what was changed to get a sense of what was going on. And it wouldn't be a bylaw change. It would be more of a, uh, updated version of it, more corrected version. Perhaps a few of those things at the town meeting itself might be very helpful for people to be able to vote on it.
And one of the other things that the Bobs have put together is a crosswalk that shows where the old section of the bylaw was and where it's been ported to in the new section of the bylaw. And that is an amazing piece of work. Uh, very impressive to have that stuff, you know, a, a chain of custody sort of thing, uh, to get them from where they went to, to where they're at now.
Yeah, I think that's a good one, but I, um, going back to the previous comment about the table of contents, uh, and connecting it to one of my previous comments, you know, you have forty-seven articles now. Those have been collapsed into fourteen. Um, and, um, you know, if you had, uh, uh, some of the detailed, just a list of table of contents from your current bylaw, you can easily read and see how scattered topics are across the bylaw. And if you look at the table of contents from the new bylaw, you can see how they've all been put into like topics in their own separate articles. And that, that's a big, that's a quick and easy visual clue as to what recodification is about in some way.
Bob? Any other comments?
All right, so we have the, the general public with us. Uh, I don't know if there's any comments from the general, but we've been taking comments and writing. We've gotten quite a few of them, but we're willing to take more. I got an email, I think, from Bob Ament, was that today? Uh, on, uh, some, some things that he had looked at that I forwarded on to, uh, to, to Bob, Bob and Bob. So as I said, as we go through this process, uh, through the next two, uh, hearing dates, we'll be continuing to make sure that, uh, anything that comes up that wasn't addressed, uh, through all the meetings and all the eyes that have looked at it, uh, that we continue making sure that we're addressing those things, uh, moving forward toward town meeting.
So have any of you any comments on what you've heard about the recodification? Any question or comment? Bob, you've been very helpful so far. We've taken in a lot of what you've told us. Yes, sir.
I would just like to say, you know...
No, you need to come forward and give your name.
I can do that. Thank you. Um, how many years has it been that the bylaws have been done at town meetings and so on and so forth? That's a lot of history. Seems like you're trying to streamline it. Be careful you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. There's a lot of good experience and knowledge in there, and I know streamlining, I don't know, is it streamlining so that development can move quicker? Or is it streamlining so that we can maintain and keep Falmouth's, um, um, you know, its uniqueness, if you will?
I'd like to respond to that in, in two ways. One, it's good advice, and we've tried very hard. Each bylaw has been passed by town meeting before, and we can't change them without the approval of town meeting. So the likelihood of losing something, we hope, is zero. So we'll, uh, we would know it if we did it, we hope. The process would, would catch that. Thank you.
Um, if I'm, if I could, just, uh, comment, um, in response to the previous comment, um, as I mentioned, almost all of the language in the draft is current language. So, um, we're just moving things over into the new draft. And we're not streamlining it for development purposes, and we're, we're not really, I don't use the term streamlining, we're reorganizing it so it's much easier to read, to find what you're looking for, and to navigate from one place to another in, in the bylaw. That's really the fundamental goal and purpose here. The substantive issues around development are really something that might be in phase two or even phase three or phase four, but really aren't part of this, uh, this part of the bylaw. It's really to try to get a well-organized bylaw using almost all of your existing language, but just, you know, as I said, getting it into, you know, the same topics in the same
And someone who's just...
Do you need to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Melissa Allenbeck. I live in Falmouth. Just as someone who's recently come to need to use the bylaws, trying to understand them has been confusing. So this is really rather exciting to me, to hear we're going to have a little revamp and update. And I, I look forward to understanding more.
Thank you. Actually, it's been interesting. Each of us have received at different times and have a copy of the reorganized bylaw. So that this is, um, I know you can't see it from where you are, I'd be happy to hand it around for you to look at. This is the new table of contents, this part here, and these, all these little numbers over here, these are the bits that went into the new one. So this is the crosswalk. And here's the new one, and I put tabs on it so I could find the articles easily and not have to thumb through it. And once we each had the new bylaw, we stopped using the old one because it has the same stuff in it. We knew we wouldn't make a mistake, but we could find what we were looking for much more easily. And the people here are the ones who are really familiar with it. So I want to thank particularly Mr. Ament for his help, Laura Moynihan, other people who gave their time, volunteered their time to help us get this right.
So to your point, uh, and to Bob's question, uh, the full draft, uh, is on the website. Uh, there are hard copies, uh, in the town clerk's office. There are hard copies in the planning office, uh, and we maintain a hard copy at the Falmouth Public Library in the reference section as well. Uh, so you can read it online, uh, you can read it in hard copy. Uh, we are not, uh, printing or publishing a hundred and fifty-four pages in multiple versions of it for obvious reasons. Uh, that's a, a lot of paper and potentially a lot of waste, but if some... But if somebody absolutely needs to have a copy, we will absolutely give them one.
Well, I know one thing that would make much easier for people to use this and to review it now. If the one online that is on the town website, each of the new sections, the new articles, if they were tabbed so they were clickable. So instead of having to, you know, find page 138 by poring through the whole electric document, you could click on that section now. It would be much easier to review it and get ready for town meeting and subsequently to use it. Bob and Bob, thank you very much for giving your time tonight. Oh, excuse me, Bob, you want to come?
As you know, I'm Bob Ament. I'm a Falmouth attorney and I do...
zoning work and I've done it for 48 years.
I appreciate the commitment of the bylaw.
You have to find out that on January 5. Pam and Bob and company, can you guys mute on your side? There's a lot of noise through your mics. Thank you.
Thank you. There, Bob, could you start over? Thank you.
Before a previous hearing about this on January 5 of this year, I sent a letter with a whole batch of suggested corrections. And going through the bylaw, the, that's the recodification, that's the town meeting warrant, not a single one of the corrections that I recommended were made. These are not matters that there's a dispute about. These were such things as the fact that the recodification says that accessory buildings can only be 18 feet high when we know that's been changed for a few years now to 22. But you'll remember that I pointed out that the chart of levels of freshwater ponds had completely wrong figures because the acreage was used instead of the height of the groundwater. In a number of other cases where there were simply errors made in that draft. So not one of those changes has been made. And it makes me wonder what other changes haven't been made that other people have recommended and why haven't the mistakes that I've noticed been noticed by others. I'm glad to hear that the bylaw changes made in June, particularly because I was involved with the solar overlay district changes, that those will be incorporated because those were passed by town meeting and they're not in the draft that's on the planning board's website. But there are these other ones that I mentioned. And you may also recall, and as I said in that correspondence, I'd only reviewed a portion of the bylaw at that time. So how many other errors are there? In going through the latest version, I saw quite a few words omitted, just editing issues. But it makes me question, how carefully has this been reviewed? And I'm really concerned about that. I think that the format is good. I think it will be good to use. But the goal of this was to do that reformatting and then make changes. Yes, it's true that most of the bylaw is the same words that are in the present bylaw. But that's not true of the sections on nonconforming uses. And that's a really important subject, uses and structures. And it deserves the particularized review by the planning board and interested parties that will come as different sections of the bylaw are reviewed. But there are wholesale changes and many words there that are not in the present bylaw, and they concern me. There is, for instance, a requirement that a nonconforming use can't be changed to a different use in one place, it says the opposite in another place. But we think about, I always think about the casino in the Falmouth Heights. There was a nonconforming use, a nightclub with occupancy for 2,400 people. And it got changed to a different nonconforming use, a number of apartments that wouldn't be allowed because of densum. We need to keep, maybe even provide more, the discretion of the zoning board of appeals to make good decisions about nonconforming properties. And the wording that's been introduced into the bylaw at this time is going to make it harder for the board. This sentence is completely new. "It is the purpose of this bylaw to discourage the perpetuity of nonconforming uses and structures when possible." Really? The Woods Hole Golf Club is a nonconforming use. Can't have a golf course in a residential zone anymore. Is it really the purpose of the bylaw to discourage the perpetuity of that nonconforming use? And there are many other examples. But changes that have made in this part of the bylaw shouldn't be here in a project that's to do the recodification and then discuss changes. So I'd hope that between now and town meeting, not only will this be better edited and the suggestions I made last January ought to be reviewed and acted on, but I would, I think that the substantive changes, because they change definitions and they change standards, they'll have a significant impact on dealing with nonconforming uses and structures in Falmouth. And we have a lot of them, and they're not bad. They're just old. Most of Main Street, for instance, a lot of nonconformances. It's not a goal to get rid of them. It shouldn't be hard to make changes to them. And this bylaw's going to make that harder. One of the changes I also made, one of the comments I had earlier was a change in the language that had to do with the section about the building commissioner issuing building permits. And one of the criteria for, was that a building commissioner could issue a building permit for lots that were shown on plans approved and/or endorsed by the planning board. That language was passed by town meeting unanimously in 1990. And the recodification changes that language in a very substantive way. It takes out the slash or. So if you actually read that and what it says now, it says that approval not required, because approval not required is not approved. They are endorsed. So and/or endorsed covers approval not required plans. Any lot created by an approval not required plan after February some date in 1956, under the language of the bylaw, would not be buildable. It is true, as was pointed out in a comment about that, that that's the language that's in a statute. That statute has to do with when are plans entitled to be endorsed? How do you get an approval not required plan? It's not in the statute as to when the building commissioner can issue a building permit. My comment was, you know, I think it was reviewed, but apparently it wasn't understood. So again, I appreciate the thanks you gave me for the help. But I, and I think we could get there for this town meeting. But boy, I'm glad we're not there now because this has got problems. Thanks.
I'm glad we're hearing that now and not at town meeting. Thank you. I wonder if Bob and Bob heard what Mr. Ament said.
Yeah, I want to say that the contract for recodification, including recodification and amending those particular sections, and one of those was nonconforming uses, which is now Article 10, correct? So Bob and Bob, that's why we, that's why there are substantial differences in nonconforming uses from the previous bylaw to what's being presented today?
Yes, the existing bylaw was fairly sparse with respect to the treatment of nonconforming uses and structures. And we felt that in order to let the bylaw that emerges from this process, you know, comprehensively be, you know, consciously consistent with the statute and with the cases, we could basically do what we were asked to do, that is to come up with a credible bylaw treatment of the topic in ways that we felt that were both consistent with the statute and fulfill the purposes of the Falmouth bylaw. And so we did that. We didn't, we didn't really simply transfer sections of the existing bylaw on this topic because there was, Bob indicated, sprinkled pretty much liberally around the existing bylaw document. But what were there didn't cover all of the fields that a zoning bylaw provision deal with nonconforming uses and structures ought to cover. So we did attempt to deal with this topic in a comprehensive and new way. And we appreciate your thoughts, Bob. And we certainly intend to review them carefully as we go forward. But, you know, that's the way we approached the assignment.
And to the point that how it aids the zoning board of appeals, we've had two members of the zoning board of appeals and the zoning administrator into the council. And essentially, I think 100% of these meetings, I don't know that they have missed any of them. So we've been, you know, we're just out here on a flyer. Bob Ritchie, can you mute again? Bob Ritchie, can you mute on your side?
Yes.
So, you know, specifically, the charge was, look at nonconforming structures and write that new section, which is what they've done, which has been vetted and viewed by members of the zoning board of appeals and their administrator.
Right, but we, the purpose of public hearings is to hear what the public has to say and respond to it. And we're still open to changes because we want to be sure we've gotten it as nearly correct as we can. I believe, and maybe other members of the board do, that we won't be 100% perfect, that we'll have to be making changes later as they emerge. But I hope that there are almost none. So we'll get as close to it as we can, and we have time to work on it.
And like I said, Bob Ament's emailed this afternoon. I forwarded on to Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell. And we'll pull back the curtain on that and see what's in there and what's not.
Right. It could be, if the, because the chapter on nonconforming has been an issue all along. And it could be that we will not be going forward with that chapter if it's still very problematic, but with the rest. Paul?
I would suggest that town, the planning department review this information with Mr. Ament. Find out what is really substantive there and go back to Bob and Bob in fairly short order. Because I would hate to have Mr. Ament get up at town meeting and say, "I object to certain items," because that'll defeat the efforts been made over many, many years. So I think we need to deal with this issue as quickly as we can. Get his information, see if it's substantive, review it with the consultants, and see what change we have to make before we get to town meeting.
Right. I would also like to say that in, we took all the comments that came from you and from others, and working with Bob and Bob and the people Tom mentioned, went through them. And most, I would say, don't you think, Pat, were things that are going to be Phase Two? There were substantive changes. So we go, oh, Phase Two, Phase Two, Phase Two. So we worked the list down of what needed to be amended in this Phase One, trying to get from one to the other without change. But it's not perfect, so we will try to fix it before town meeting.
So we've got Bob's stuff, Bob Ament's stuff today to Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell. And we'll all be looking at it later in the week.
I was going to make a suggestion. Has its pros and cons, and probably more cons than pros. When the building, state building code has been amended, there's been a period of time when one could apply under either building code. Particularly since the intent here is not to be changing substance. One wonders whether one couldn't apply under either code for a year or so. And that would give us the opportunity to see the differences. It's a suggestion. I'm not sure it's a good one.
How did it work out for the state? Do we know how it worked out for the state? How did it work out for the state when they did that?
Well, I imagine there are builders here who could answer that question better than I can.
Glenwood, we were able to get a permit based on an older decision because it had changed in the interim from the time we got the original permit to when we started building. It did work for us.
It's an interesting suggestion, but I don't know how well you work with, you know, two bylaws sort of in parallel track.
Well, because your hope is that they aren't radically different, that they are nearly the same.
Yeah.
And the people working most closely with it have found, oops, the piece that mattered most to them is just a little different. It's not really two bylaws. It's two versions of one thing, and you can be approved under one or the other. I think it's a good idea. Jim?
Well, as I recall, the state building code's about this thick. Okay, and our code's about that thick. So I think we could possibly deal with this if we had to.
Put it in the list of ideas. All righty. So if there's nothing else from the public, we've got a couple other folks. So we can get a motion to continue this to October 12.
Ah, great.
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for putting up with this. If you're not really close to it, it can get really tedious.
This is a bit, a little bit of levity. The reason we have ice houses is that the Beebe family actually had an ice house over on what used to be called Ice House Pond on Sipuset Road across from Racine Beach. So that's why we have ice houses. And we ought to be very proud of the Beebe's because they built St. Boniface Episcopal Church, and it's one of the most beautiful churches around. And I can't help but bring that stuff up as a bit of history. But George Moses also said, "Falmouth is different because the Roman Catholic church is a wood and the Protestant church is a stone." So anyways, just a little bit of levity.
So we set to move on on our agenda?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Good night. Drive home safely.
Thank you. Powerpoint's next time.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments.
We'll be in touch. Next on our agenda, let's see, where are we? The applicant, Joseph M. and Maria C. Santos. Continuing this as a definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located in 187 Central Avenue. Who is going to present initially on this?
So for the record, again, as you know, I'm Bob Ament. I represent the applicants. This plan is just about the same plan as was presented two weeks ago. But there's a little difference. There is a sidewalk shown on this plan extending from Central Avenue along the northerly side of the proposed road all the way to that point at the, parallel to the center of the cul-de-sac. And in addition, this plan shows the easement that is enjoyed by the neighbors to the... And in addition, this plan shows the easement that is enjoyed by the neighbors to the south, extending all along the northerly boundary of the property until this point, about two-thirds of the way back to Central Avenue, where the easement location appears towards the properties that have the benefit of the easement. What Matt did of Cape and Island Engineering did, he's here tonight, was take the easement directly from the 2006 plans. The easement is shown on those plans, and they are the exhibits referred to by the land court that in its, in a court decision, found there to be an easement along the northerly line and referred to those plans to show where it would be. So, um, the sidewalk actually would connect right to the, to the easement, which seems to make some sense. Other than that, there are no changes. Oh, one, there's one change, particularly with the installation of the sidewalk, which I believe is four and a half feet wide, and the grass strip that would be between the sidewalk and the street, I think that's four feet wide. We felt that it would be safe and more pleasing to have the roadway be 20 feet wide of pavement instead of the 22. It'd save some money also. End up with more pavement because of the sidewalk, but, um, this is a subdivision that's less than 500 feet long. It only serves four lots, and to think that that only slightly narrower pavement width is perfectly reasonable under those circumstances. So that's, that's it. That changes our list of waivers, adding that 20 feet instead of 22 feet of pavement, but deleting the request for, um, not having a sidewalk. And then we did submit a new list of requested waivers, and they are the types of waivers that would typically be, be granted and have been granted recently in other cases involving just several lot subdivisions. You know, your road construction requirements are the same, whether it's for a subdivision with two miles of roads and 100 house lots, or whether it's for a three or four lot subdivision. And I think when we have, um, this type of, uh, project proposed, then, um, the kinds of waivers that we've requested makes sense, and are the kinds we've granted before. Remind you that, um, a almost identical subdivision was approved by the planning board in 2006 and upheld by the land court, but in that same decision, that easement was found, uh, to be, to exist. And I also have learned, um, that in 1987, this property plus the, um, portion of the rectangle that is excised, this portion, when it was a single property owned by the Johnson family, there was a subdivision plan submitted for, to divide the entire property into seven lots, and the planning board approved that back then. That plan was never exercised either. So hopefully, um, you'll think this is a better plan, is responsive to the concerns, and, uh, love to have you to vote to approve it. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Ament? Paul?
Well, the concern, some of the residents have the access to the pond, obviously. I look at the revised drawing, and it shows, I believe, what was in the land court decision, where the property line goes along the edge of the property, and then it ends in the middle of that property. And the drawings show four and a half foot asphalt walkway. That asphalt walkway will be built by the developer along the outside edge until the middle of the cul-de-sac. And then, if I understand it, the rest of the right-of-way will continue, probably on dirt, all the way, unimproved? So there'd be unfettered access from Chivik's Pond along the paved area, and then the natural ground all the way to the pond.
We just referred to right-of-way, and I assume you're, you're meaning the easement that runs, uh, right. There's no intention to make changes to the, to that path. I've walked it. It's a lovely way to get down to the water, and it provides easy access also to the town property that's to the north. But there's, um, the easement is for the benefit of owners of two adjacent properties, the Johnsons and June Pena. They have that right. It's, they, they're the only people who have the rights. They were the plaintiffs in the, in the land court, uh, case. So we will be making it, um, easy for them to get to it and to be able to, um, to use the path.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we're getting involved in private property rights and not planning. I mean, this has been adjudicated, it's been settled, it's documented, it's there. We don't really, I've never got this deep into easements before for private property. I just wonder why we're going into this deep. I think it's pretty clear.
It is clear.
The court, it's settled.
I think it was wanted on the plan. It was of concern to, to the neighbors that it would be there. They were looking for that reassurance. John, did you have something you wanted to say?
Uh, yes. Bob, do, can you, or do you know what size of the parcel is that the town owns? It looks like it's maybe five or six acres.
I think that's just about right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No? Any comments?
No, I can't.
Oh, Pat?
Some of the comments make me want to make, some of the comments make me want to make some comments on this, rather than the actual questions, if you will. I think that the easement should be marked, because it's not always going to be that the Johnsons or the Santos's own this property. At some point in time, it's going to be transferred, but their heirs would still have rights to that, from the way I read it. And unless the easement is memorialized, marked, there will be people who claim it as their property, and it kind of like disappears, even if it is on this plan. And I think it should be marked. That's one. And I'm wondering, because part of our responsibility is site plan review and this type of thing, too. A number of the trees are going to come down, and I understand that the tree warden said, "Yes, it's okay if they come down," but they may have to go before a board for that. And I noticed that there are seven street trees going to be planted along the roadway in.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm wondering, because when the lots are developed, I think that we could make a requirement along the cul-de-sac, but I'm not sure about this, along the cul-de-sac, that a street tree be planted one per lot, because then that keeps that street treed, and it is a street, even if it is a cul-de-sac. So these are some wonderings, musings, if you want to call them, that I think have to do with this.
Not sure to go where with the musing.
I don't either.
Did you want to comment on that?
Clearly, um, monumenting the easement is not a, um, a terribly burdensome thing, but it's an expense. But it, that easement is already located on plans of record. Is the subject of a court decision that refers to plans. It's shown on this plan, which is going to be put on record. And it actually only crosses one of the lots. And while it's of not great significance, that's the lot that Mr. Santos and his wife intend to build their own home on, so they know there's an easement there. The easement is perpetual. And, um, but it will always be able to be determined. And a good portion of it also, of the path, as shown on the, on the plans, actually crosses onto the town property. Basically, it's an easement that runs along a property line, which will be monumented. At the beginning of the path, about where the sidewalk hits the, hits the path, we could put a monument, we could put a sign, we, we don't want to have that, and, and there's simply no reason for it. We're talking about a, an easement that's enjoyed by immediate neighbors. They'll know where it is. They do know where it is. And there's really, given the court decision, there's no dispute about it. So I think that that, to need to put a lot of bounds or signs or something, that just is not necessary. We just had a case on Palmer Avenue where we were creating an easement for people to get to the bike path, and the board, in its wisdom, concluded that it wasn't necessary to, to monument, because it went right along a property line between two lots, and essentially that's the case here. Can you remind me what your other points were?
The trees.
As we did in the other case I just referred to, what I would suggest is that we see what trees can be saved in the construction process, that we not be required to clear the entire road layout if we can construct the road and the sidewalk without doing so. It may be that there, and the area where you're talking about in the cul-de-sac is, is presently heavily treed. One tree per lot along that cul-de-sac? No problem at all. I just don't think it, it will necessarily be required, and we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Bob, I'm cautious, because if it's not in a decision, these things can kind of tend to disappear.
Well, I think there can be language in the decision that concerns if it's in the, if it's in waivers or as a condition that upon, that prior to release, um, the planning board will review the need for trees within the layout. That's, I, no problem with that. And you had a third point.
No, it was only those two, because it was the trees-
Okay.
...there are seven of them along the roadway going in.
Okay.
And the third point, if you will, is the access around the cul-de-sac is fair, fairly narrow. I have no idea how much of that is going to be destroyed by construction vehicles going in. So the vegetation will be cloud under, destroyed, whatever, and that's why I think it might be wise to have at least one tree per lot.
I have no problem with, with that at all. Other than that, I think it's something that we should look at and see if it's necessary.
John?
I too agree that the easement should be marked. It seems to be very important to other family members. Went through a court case, it's been decided. But my question is, the proposed light out at the entranceway on the utility pole, who will be responsible for that light? Is there going to be an association here, or someone has to pay the bill?
Sure. Uh, it's a good question, and I'm not sure of the answer, whether Mr. Santos, particularly owning that lot, will take responsibility for that, or whether it's possible to have that light be, have, be solar powered. I really don't know the answer, if that's possible. In this case, if that it were possible, it would seem like a good solution, distance of it from any of the houses. Thank you.
Bob?
Question for town planner. We do require street lighting. What is the distance between those lights in a situation like this?
I'll have to check on it, but-
I do know, the, the, the subdivision rules and regulations require, uh, streetlight at the entrance of the subdivision, and don't require another streetlight unless the road is over 500 feet.
It's over, okay. I thought that was the cutoff.
Okay, if the board has no more questions, are there any comments from the people-
Well, may I, may I just talk a little bit about this easement? Because I had written about it. So, uh, so my concern, because I work for posterity, I have a lot of things that I'm sorting out that happened 20 or 30 years ago. So my suggestion to the board, in looking at this and, and just doing, you know, some, investigating some costs, my idea for noting both the easement in the plans and in the decision, but also on the ground, by essentially setting two granite posts, like a, like a post you see for mailboxes. So I checked with Svenson Granite, and I said, "Well, here's what I'm thinking about. What have you got in engraving these posts?" So essentially, for around $1,200, what they told me, they can create two 12 by 12, 12-inch by 12-inch, by seven-feet-tall posts. Three feet of this is buried in the ground, or four feet's buried in the ground, the other sticks up. They weigh about 1,200 pounds, so no one's likely going to carry them off. So when you get to the end of the sidewalk at the cul-de-sac, there are two posts that are set, and I had suggested they say something like Johnson Path. So anybody who walks down to the end of the sidewalk, anybody who owns that piece of property, because the current owners are going to know exactly what's going on, but the future owners may not. And most people aren't going to go to the registry days, they're not going to see something in their closing. So my suggestion was, where the sidewalk ends, in O. D. Shel Silverstein, who, one of my favorite authors, to install the, have the developer install these two posts that are, that are graded, it says, you know, whatever this, this, this path. And then, as you walk along the path, like I did this weekend in Williamstown, where they had an open space path, and it wasn't this situation, but it was a walking path, essentially right next to a driveway. And so at that point, it said, "Driveway to the left is private property, to the right is the walking post." But every time you walked along that path, where you came up to a turn, or you came up along some private property, there was a very simple sign there about, you know, index card size or so, that basically says, "Private property." So that person who's walking along the path, there's no confusion about, "Do I get to walk somewhere else?" You, you stay on the path. So by noting it on the ground at the entrance, and noting along the way that this is the path, and, you know, that's private property, it's all private property, because it's not a separate lot. We looked as hard as we could to figure out there was a way to yield these four lots and actually carve out sort of a, sort of a five-foot, 10-foot, whatever, right-of-way, the rest of the way to the pond, but there isn't room for that with the sufficient number of lots. So my suggestion was, for about $1,200, this is not the price installed, to mark the po, mark the trail with these two posts, put those signs along the way, and in that 25-foot from the property line, create a no disturbs zone, so it's treed. So when somebody comes along, the future owner, and goes, "You know, I don't like these acorns, I don't like these, I want to make more lawn," so they're not clearing lawn up to the part of the property line, so now when someone's walking down the path, they're, feel a lot more like they're walking through somebody's lawn, rather than walking on the path through the woods. So my suggestions to monument this on the ground are those two granite posts, the signs along the way, noting private property on the lot itself where the people live at, and a no disturbs zone 25-foot along the edge of that property to keep it in its state that it's in now.
I'm not familiar with no disturb zones. It sounds sort of like a taking.
Well, it's basically, it's, it's what we have essentially for our solar bylaw. That first 100-foot, you have to have that setback. You don't get to take the trees down and things like that within that 100-foot. So that 25-foot along the side of the property would essentially be a no disturbs zone, so the lot is 150-foot wide as we get deeper into the property. So it's not an onerous amount of, and frankly, there's lots of trees out there anyhow. So my goal is to make sure that a future owner doesn't, understands there's something on the ground, and they don't expand their lawn to the part where they're, you know, sort of, have that sort of interaction of, "Why is that person standing in the grass? Why aren't they just walking through the path as they typically would?"
Jim?
This is my point. I think this is a way overreach. I don't think it's our business. I think it's been adjudicated, it's been on the land court, and there's no disturb zone. Where the hell's this coming from?
Let's, Bob?
Well, I agree with Jim Fox. I agree with Jim Fox. If the owner of this lot wants to put lawn all the way to the town property and allow people to walk across the lawn on occasion that they wish to, I mean, they'd have a right to do it all the time, but that's between them. That's fine. The solar bylaw may have required setbacks for certain reasons, but I don't think there's anything in the subdivision rules and regulations that allows the planning board to do what Tom Bod is suggesting. The monumenting, it's not a lot of money for sure, but it's also not right. There's just simply no authority for it. The easement will be set forth in the deets. Anybody who buys that lot is going to know their subject to an easement. If the neighbors forget about it and don't use it for a zillion years, hey, that's not for the planning board to decide, that there has to be a reminder all the time that they have the rights to use it.
Okay, I think we understand your position on that. I'd like to hear from, unless the board has something more to contribute, to hear from the public.
Let me just follow up on what he just said.
First of all, Mr. Johnson, would you introduce yourself again?
Yes, Joseph Johnson. Almost it's a frivolous waste of time for you to be taking this up. This was already decided in the courts, and, you know, I don't know, there are like five other points that are very important that we should get to. You guys, with all due respect, you can't make a decision on there unless you take it to court. And all this about monuments and stuff is nice, but it's not appropriate in this setting at this particular time. I think we should move on because there are definite points which they're asking for variances and easements that are destructive to the neighborhood and destructive to private property. And when I get up there, I'm going to read a statement that I did send to you, Tom, and I was hoping that you pass it along to the members.
Every member, I believe, has a copy of Bernice's.
You do? Not Bernice's, the one I emailed you. I'll read it when I get up there.
Could you please give your name?
June Pena.
Thank you.
Seems to be a real big problem about this easement, which my cousin knew about when he drew up the new plan, and I was upset he didn't put it in, and now he's putting the sidewalk. There is no guarantee, and if that's going to be a private road or a public road, I don't know, but there's no guarantee that I can go up that sidewalk, go beyond those poles, and go where I want to go. And am I out the use of the easement? Well, I don't walk it anymore because I can't walk that far, but my grandchildren do, and I just got great-grandchildren, and I assume that they will. When my brother's children come from the city, my sister's kids come from the city, they are so proud that they can walk to the water, and they don't see this in the city. So you're going to have all these, and we use it more in the spring, summer, and fall when everybody gets together. So you've got all these people who are going to buy these expensive houses, which I'm glad they can afford, and my family is biracial. They're going to see from very dark people in the family to very light people in the family. I've dealt with prejudice. So all of a sudden, you're going to see all these little people of color coming, and then it's going to be a big problem. And if the easement is not put in the deed or shown on the plan, what are we going to fight with when we tell them that we have an easement to get to that water?
May I just say, the easement has been decided by a court. The easement has now been recorded on the plan. That's all the planning board needed to know, and it's there. That's as close to a guarantee as you can get, and you've already got it.
It's recorded forever.
Well, but it's been put in the present easement.
It is.
It is.
I mean, when you buy the piece of property and the easement is mentioned in it, you know there's an easement. If it isn't mentioned, you do a back title to find out what I'm talking about.
I think that's why you're going to expect a lawyer to guarantee this.
You're going to look for it on the plan.
It's there.
It's there. You're all set.
And I've done titles, so I know, and I've lost.
Right, it's there.
Yeah, but it's going to be on the deeds. It's here, but who's going to look at the plan? When you buy a piece of property, do you go and look at the subdivision plan?
I do.
Well, you're a man, so you're not a... If I went and bought it, I'm not going to look at it. I'm going to believe what's on the deed.
I love her.
And an unregistered, excuse me.
We've gone as far as we can go with this.
An unregistered deed is not as valid as a land court deed. When you record an unregistered deed, the boundaries and things are not checked. We could care less if you have an easement, a plan, as long as you have a title reference. When you go to land court, all those things have to match. I was 30 years at the registry, so I know how to record a deed. I've been gone 12 years, so there could be changes.
Mrs. Pena, I respect your expertise. I think that you have as much as you can get from us. We've done our best with this, and the people who are trying to settle this have also. So I think you're as all set as you can get here.
Well, I just hope everybody understands that.
Right. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Thank you, June. Those hotel comments. I had, I actually have problems with all the waivers and variances. They put the neighborhood in peril. It jeopardizes safety, and it also takes advantage of private property in a way that we should not allow, especially a planning board whose function is to protect private property. I will read you something I asked Tom to forward it to you guys, and he was out of the office, so I definitely can't, that's what I was told anyway. Good morning, Thomas. This is Joseph Johnson. Following up on our meeting and hoping to open up more lines of communications with you and the planning board. First, we have no objections to the subdivision at 187 Central Avenue. As originally approved, this plan has been approved, and he could have at any point in time went forward with it, he chose not to. With the subdivision at 187 Central Avenue as originally approved, sorry, I'll need to fill in the date, and I think it's 2011 that he had Todd Blanch to do what he wanted and without impediment. At some point, but this is the only approved plan on record. This one hasn't been approved yet. But also it would need alterations or variances for him to go forward on, he can go forward on a period. Now instead, the developers are asking for another cost-cutting bite at the apple, again, at the expense of public safety and the abudders' private property rights. Please, please be aware of the following. My sister Bernice, an abuddah, landowner, is in the process of faxing a copy of the many concerns we have, and I think Tom mentioned he had them, and cost-cutting variances being asked for by the new subdivision proposal. This is a new one. He had one since 2011.
Let's go forward.
I'm repeating myself, and I'm sorry about that. Hopefully, we can work together and get a safe and equitable resolution for the parties, for all parties concerned, and keep the communication lines open right up to the meeting, which I didn't receive a notification. So as I checked on it, I found out that it was scheduled, and we were told that sufficient announcement was made at the last meeting, and they didn't feel that they were required to re-notify us. And I would like to say, start with the most egregious variant they're asking for. Change in the slope on the new road from two degrees every 100 feet to five. That means that road is going to be, it's going to be at an incline, impermeable surface, and water is going to travel down there. A 20-foot drop in 100 feet, and we figured that the middle of the road, there's another 10 feet, I mean, there'll be another 10-foot drop, there'll be 30-foot drop for 150 feet of road, and the water is going to percolate and pick up momentum, and according to their plan, they're diverting the water, the excess water, to the south. They're protecting our property rights at the north, which is town property, which also was on a lower plane, they could divert it that way, but they wouldn't do that, which I'm grateful. They shouldn't divert it to private property either. And they're asking for an easement to do that. The proper easement, the proper road grade is 2...
Cent.
2%. Thank you. 2% for 100 feet. Now, that's a vast increase, and that puts private property in jeopardy. Now, they're protecting the private property, the rights of people who don't own the property yet, at the expense of people who have been there for a long time. The other one is the light at the end of the street. It seems that they changed that. There was a variance, they didn't want to put a light there, and it's very dangerous, they're creating a very dangerous intersection. I feel that they need 300 feet, according to your bylaws, in order to build that road. They only have 260. Well, given they should be kissing our feet, sorry about that analogy, for allowing them to build the road, which they need a variance for, because without that variance, they can't build the road, no development. So they're willing to agree to that. But the public safety element of there not being a light and the grade being at 5%, cars coming up, it's dangerous. I will ask my nephew to come up for a second because unfortunately, somebody's serendipity had a very serious accident today on Central Avenue.
Hi, my name's Stephen Pena.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that. It's one...
Hi, my name's Stephen Pena. Where they want to put the road, it's supposed to be 300 feet between Soares Lane and where they want to put the road. They have 240 feet. In the past two months, there's been two major car accidents there. I had to pull two kids out of the car, 2:00 in the morning, they hit the telephone pole, flipped over in front of where the road's supposed to go. Had to pull a kid out of a car tonight, picture right here, car split in half where the road's supposed to go. It's not enough space. That's the straightest road in the whole town I've found with the Central Ave. There was another accident at the end of the road. The car was going so fast, it ran right across the street into a house that's probably 500 feet off the road. That's the only problem. They don't want to put lights there, they don't want to, they want to cut the road short.
I thought there is a light there.
The light's there.
I know, but it's still, it's still 60 feet short. It's a dangerous part of the road. Every summer, we have accidents, whether coming out of our yard, my grandmother's yard, his yard, DeSanto's yard.
I think we've heard testimony that the light's going into the street. We've heard it a couple times, and you guys say it isn't there. I'm just confused.
No, well, I...
I think originally, excuse me, I think originally there was a, in one of their plans, not to put the light in.
Yeah.
And... But it's on this plan. It's changed now in this plan. And addressing the sidewalk and easement, those were things that were already in the first plan, and now they acted like they've given it to us. This was in the first plan, which they never executed, and now it's a gift to us. They had to do that. That's not true. It's not sincere. It's, 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 excuse my language, no smoke and mirrors on that particular point. I would like to hear from the engineer of what he thinks about the momentum, the water's going to...
Just a moment. You can't ask questions of the people, all those people. They have to speak through us.
I would like for you to hear from the engineer on what is, and what is the plan of diverting the water to the south, which is onto private property, as opposed to the north. They're both on the same plan because they say in their plan, they didn't want to do it on town property. I guess it's what their desire is to do it on public, on private property.
I'm just trying to get straight what variances you want to get rid of and...
Yeah, I go through them. Wait a second. We're using the term variance.
We don't do variance.
I should say waivers.
I used, I used wrongly.
We're using different language here. Okay, and I looked those two words up, and they're kind of, they're kind of like synonyms, but they're not exact. They describe two different events in a different, in a different context. That's all.
I misspoke, the waivers. Now, you talked about the light at the end of the road. Can I assume that if there is a light at the end of the road, the 300-foot distance from Soares Lane is, the 260-foot distance from Soares Road would be okay if there is a light there?
That's what we said. We would allow that if there was a light there. I want you to be clear on that.
I wanted to be clear.
We're not trying to stop the development. He could have done it at any time without any more improvements.
All right, but it's there.
So it is, so it is there now. So that takes care of one of your concerns, and it takes care of this other concern. So if the light is there, it negates the Soares Lane distance.
What about the slope?
Well, I'm addressing this.
Okay. We would like to hear from the engineer about the slope.
I absolutely would. One more, one more point.
Okay, if we could just avoid repeating ourselves, I think...
No, I'm not going to repeat myself. On the plan where they're going to put the sidewalk in the grass, we drive our trucks down to the water, to the edge of the water, to the path that goes down to the water. So my question is, is there going to be a problem with the homeowner? Are we driving across there?
Yes, this is not a street. This is a footpath, which there is an easement for. There's not an easement for driving trucks.
Well, the footpath is that, that's how wide the footpath is. The footpath is wide enough to drive a vehicle down there. That's, that's why I think he was saying Johnson's path with the poles and all that.
I don't believe so.
You know, just to mark the existing walkway. Now, I have walked from the back of the property to the front of the property. You can't get through the easement at the front because it's overgrown there, but it's essentially, you know, it's a woods path. There's, on the south side of the property, there's more, probably more well-worn paths there that looks like somebody might have taken a vehicle out there for a while.
Was that what the court, who knows what the court said? Did they say anything about trucks?
No, I don't think so. So I wouldn't...
The court heard lots of testimony. In the court decision, a lot of the testimony is repeated. There were references to driving down there at different times. No evidence that was done for 20 years. The court said nothing other than an easement for access to Warren's Pond. Doesn't say that it's for vehicular access. What is clear is that the easement, and this is discussed by the court, the easement is for access from those abutting properties to the pond. It actually is not an easement from Central Avenue. It is an easement, and that perhaps is why on the plans referred to in the court decision, the easement turns right here to the south, towards the abutting properties. Now, so the abudders have the right to get to that easement and go to the pond on it. Yes, it's wide enough you could drive a pickup truck or something for a while, then it's, I've walked the path, it narrows, there's no evidence of recent vehicular traffic. Mr. Santos has told me, it's been years and years and years since there's been a truck down there. Now, somebody may disagree, but it's not for the planning board to decide.
Exactly. That's not what we do. So that's, that's a point we can't address. Could we please address the request for the waiver? The applicant is proposing a grade that is 4.9% rather than the required 2%, and has stated that the grading has been designed for both safety and sight distance, as well as to minimize cuts and fills in order to limit sight disturbance and preserve natural resources. as well as to minimize cuts and fills in order to limit site disturbance and preserve natural resources. Uh, could you tell us about the safety of that and the drainage?
Uh, good evening, Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering. Um, I will discuss the slope first. So, the bylaw that we're seeking the waiver for is no slopes greater than two percent for the first one hundred feet of the roadway. So, uh, which means this is the edge of the roadway. For the first one hundred feet, which is, which is approximately here, um, the requirement is slopes no greater than two percent. We're, we're on a curve, and the, the two percent starts somewhere in this area. There's actually a, literally five or ten feet where we're exceeding that two percent slope within the first one hundred feet. And the purpose of it is so that your car is not like down in a hole and you have to try to pull out onto the road. Um, the car, there's plenty of space and sight, um, for sight visibility to pull your car out of the road. And just regarding that, the, the four point nine percent slope is well within subdivision rules and regulations. And the, the reason we are avoiding, uh, creating this curve sooner than the one hundred feet is in order to limit this cut and fill. So by doing that, we're actually able to lessen the slope. Um, and lessen disturbance, I think I already mentioned this, uh, last time, to the surrounding area. The more fill you fill into this, this roadway, the more fill you need out on the shoulders, and it's just more destructive to the overall, um, layout of the site. And you see, it does, you know, from this point, this is elevation twenty-five. And, um, you know, this is elevation seventeen, so over three hundred feet, it is a change of about six feet, um, which is, uh, parking lots are designed for up to five percent, uh, slope. So it's a very minimal, um, slope. But that two percent is for the first hundred feet only. The rest of the roadway does not need a waiver for the slopes. Um, drainage, so the drainage, it, it is being captured at the low point. So this low point, um, is this low point in the site. And it's, from there, it's being piped underground to infiltration systems. It's actually the same exact design. Um, I have the plan here. This is the previous plan from two thousand six, two thousand seven. There were two catch basins at the low point in the road, piped to subsurface infiltration on that same thing. It's actually, um, very similar, if not almost exactly the same, design as the previous, um, project. And then lastly, this whole entire, and we've shown this in our drainage report, the whole entire lot even above our site drains through, you can see the contours, it drains across the site and down through both properties. We're actually reducing that runoff. That we're, this proposal will reduce the runoff that is, um, currently exists today. Through, we've documented that through our engineering calculations. Um, we have provided a, uh, again, it's out of our control, the, the neighboring lot just naturally grades from north to south. We've provided a culvert, um, not for any of the roadway, not for any other drainage other than just not create a dam. You know, we don't want this road to stop all the existing natural drainage that's happening anyways. Um, so this culvert here is just a link. If any water does make it, um, across, it'll continue to flow as, as normally directed. So, um, we've documented that through our stormwater management report. That's been reviewed by, um, Falmouth Engineering.
Thank you.
Do you have some questions? I have another question on that.
Um, is it going to add to what we need to know for what we decide?
I'm, I'm asking a question about the flow of the water, which he, which he diverts to the south, which is the Johnson property. And he says he can't control it once he gets past there. And, um, the, um, the, um, five percent, I don't know if my math is right, but five percent for every hundred feet, that would be a twenty, twenty, twenty-foot drop. I don't, you know, that's my, um, like, um, that's, that's just my, um, what you call estimated calculation. And, uh, that would be twenty foot, wouldn't that increase the, the speed of the water in its hydraulic action when you're diverting it onto private property? Um, why didn't you divert it to the north? And what I read in your plan is because it was town property. They have the same elevation on the town property.
This is the twenty-five foot elevation here.
Okay.
The low point...
Okay.
And that's a seventeen foot elevation. That's eight feet over, over three hundred feet. Not twenty feet, eight feet over three hundred feet.
I, I, I don't know the math, but it seems like we would like to have somebody look at that.
Thank you, we just did have someone look at that, so let's, let's go forward.
With our interest. What about the water being diverted there? That's all I would like to know.
I'd just like to make one more, one more comment on the, on the five percent. Just one more comment on the five percent. Um, you know, we have a vertical curve. The five percent is from the end of this curve at station one plus eighty-eight. It ends at station two. It, it's only five percent for twelve feet. So, and then it goes into the next curve in the, in the, the slope.
I take your point, this is good. Could we move on? There are additional waivers requested that we haven't heard anything about. You want to talk about the other waivers you're looking for?
Uh, so the first one on the list was the, uh, distance to Soars Lane. They just covered that one. The second one was the two percent, uh, within a hundred feet.
Yep, and now we're on the, uh, shoulder dimensions.
Okay, so three oh five, twenty-four C, typical roadway cross-section. So we're looking to reduce the shoulder from eleven feet down to five feet. And that's, now with the sidewalk, we're actually, we can maintain the five feet on the outside of the sidewalk. So on the northern side, we have five plus four point five plus four. So we're basically at the required shoulder. On the southern side, we're seeking a waiver for five feet instead of eleven in order to preserve what we can of natural vegetation. It's actually a, a section in the subdivision, is a whole natural resource protection. Um, so that's the reasoning for the request for the waiver. There's no other reason than to try to preserve natural vegetation.
Okay, let's move on to the next about, I think we've already discussed trees, and we're going to see, uh, as the project goes forward, if the natural trees can serve the purpose, or if in fact, trees need to be planted. So we've already discussed that. On two forty dash one one twelve B, Stormwater Management.
Yeah, so the engineering department has stated, and in, in our calculations, there is still technically minimal runoff that can leave our project site. However, it should be greatly reduced, or slightly, at least slightly reduced from what's there today. It's basically, no matter what, there's a portion of this site that'll, um, continue to flow off-site, but it is reduced from today's drainage. So, wi- without creating a pond or something to contain that existing runoff, and more importantly, the runoff that might come from the other site. Um, but we've documented through engineering calculations that it's, should be reduced as part of this proposal.
Have we covered now each and discussed each of the waivers that you're looking for? Bob?
Yes.
Well, before, I just want to emphasize what, uh, Mr. Dibb is saying is that there will be less runoff onto the adjacent property because of this work than there is now.
We follow that, and it's, it's in what we're looking at.
And the only one you haven't, uh, gotten to on the first page of request is the reduction in the width from twenty-two to twenty feet. We think that, that that's a safe, uh, width. Uh, it helps to preserve more of the natural vegetation. It reduces the amount of runoff. I can't see any reason why for a four-lot subdivision of less than five hundred square, uh, five hundred feet length, um, a twenty-foot wide roadway that, on a straight road, there's no visibility problem. Why, that shouldn't be sufficient.
John?
Excuse me, I would like to see on a plan what it would take to avoid any runoff going onto the adjacent property. If it, if it takes a, a small drainage area with some rocks in it, or a larger one, I'd like to see what it would take to contain the water on their site instead of having it run off to the, to the neighbor's property. Because we've seen the storms we're having, and there's a lot of water coming down today.
It's tremendous.
And they're, they're asking for a lot of waivers there. We're trying to do the best we can for the town and the neighbors. I'd like to see their engineer show what it would take to contain the water on their site and run it past our engineering department. They're going to come back for another meeting anyway, right? That's what I would like to see.
First of all, I'd like to say I don't think we're asking for a lot of waivers for a four-lot subdivision, and I think they all make sense. And I think that's going in a, uh, a direction that, um, in this case, it might be possible to control all the water on site and have none go off. Probably is possible. Think about the next case, when there's a, a significant slope and a lot of water naturally goes off the property and downhill. It just is simply unreasonable to say not only do you have to take care of all of the water that you're, a runoff that's being created by your road, but you're supposed to change the, uh, natural flow of, of, of water downhill.
Right, the lay of the land there, the topography as such, is the water's going in that direction. Jim?
Um, I have a feeling that the solution we're getting at is going to be worse than what we have. We're going to be cutting down more trees, basically making a giant gutter to catch the water and turn it into a higher street as opposed to leaving it as a quiet country road that's engineered properly. I think we're arguing about things that are not going to get, if I lived on the street, I'd want to have more trees and have it the way it look as natural as possible. The arguing for better drainage and a drainage pond and stopping the water. Yeah, they could make the street fifty feet wide, put a gutter right down there and that, but do you want that? Or do you want a quiet little road going in? The cure could be worse than what we have. Be careful what you're asking for.
Anyone else on the board want to comment?
I'd like to make one...
I have, I have something very important to say, and I...
And some of it's democracy. I went this way. Sorry about that.
I'm already in hot water with the, uh, family, my side and my cousin. And they're all too young to remember this. Nineteen fifty-six. We had that hurricane that knocked the bridge down in Monarch. Well, I want you to know, Joe Santos' property, water. And we told my father, we were young then, you know, the waters. And my father said that the water doesn't climb the hill. So if you're going to knock all these trees down again, where's the water going to go? What if we have another big hurricane? Hurricane Bob was pretty bad. So, I mean, go ahead, build it. But make sure your water stays on your side of the land. And, and all this, it's a gully. You know, you go down the hill. We used to slide on the sleds down there when we were kids. And when all the apple trees and things were gone, that's where the water went.
Tom?
So, what can you say?
If, if I can make one very non-technical co- uh, comment about stormwater is the basic tenets of stormwater regulation is that post-development flow of water has to be equal to the pre-development flow of water. You can't pour more water on the property next door. You can't starve the property next door. And that's why engineers look at those calculations of what is the water flow right now based on, uh, the science and the regulations, and what will be the water flow afterwards. So, if the example is if six buckets of water leave the site now, when you're done with the development, six buckets of water should leave the site. But you can't starve and you can't flood the people next door. That's a basic tenet of stormwater.
That's very helpful. And I understand the, uh, the select board last night took up the issue of stormwater. We, we may be having stormwater management, um, as a more routine part of everything that we discuss because storms are getting worse. But to know that keeping it neutral by whatever we agree to is our objective, that, that's good to know. Thank you.
One departing comment. Um, had the, like I said, they could have put this development through. The only reason I can see for all these, these, I'll call them waivers, some people call them easements, whatever, is to cut costs. Let's, let's be honest. They're cutting costs. And so many waivers, the planning board should be a little bit cautious before they just grant these waivers. They get the big one with the, to even put the street in. That's against the, the planning board's rules, not mine.
Sir, you are repeating yourself. Mr. McGrath?
My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a civil engineer and land surveyor. And I want to tell you that I think the worst subdivision regulation I've ever seen was the one that adopted that says you clearcut the forty-four feet before you have the side slopes. I've designed twenty-three miles of road in this town, and the only time I ever did that was up at the EDIC. In a resi- I, residential subdivisions, and I named a whole bunch of them at one hearing that I've done where we start the, the, um, side slopes like four or five feet off the pavement. This idea that you're going to clearcut forty-four feet before you have the side slopes is in your regulations, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the most destructive regulation I've seen.
Thank you. I think that we are going to take this under advisement. So, accept a motion to continue the hearing? Oh, Jeb?
Well, Madam Chair, we just got to bring to your attention that Engineering Division just submitted comments back today.
Oh.
Uh, and so the staff really hasn't had an opportunity to go through them, but it seems like you're entertaining a motion, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Is there somebody else that wants to speak?
No, I think everyone had raised his hand and spoke who wanted, am I right about that? Yes, I think they all had an opportunity.
So with that review from Engineering that will be forwarding on to Mr. Dibbs in Cape and Islands, uh, they'll be looking at what those, uh, tenets are and those things to address.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will move that the definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at one eighty-seventh Central Ave, you know, we continue to...
Uh, October twelfth.
October twelfth, same time, same place.
October what?
Well...
Twelve. Okay.
Second?
Second.
Anyone second, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll give you sending out notices, please.
Uh, they will not.
Just got it.
They will not.
No, so you get, you get one notice at the beginning to invite you. And then we continue the meeting. And so you write a note on your paper that says, "Come back October twelfth."
I promise I will teach you, I'll write it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, wait, I need my classes back. Could you take your conversation outside, please? Thank you. Tim Verslyke and Patricia Pinto de Silva continued. A preliminary plan application to create a two-lot subdivision located at one ninety Fire Town Road. I believe that was, yeah? We have...
We have a letter requi- uh, the applicants are requesting that they withdraw the plan without prejudice for the preliminary subdivision application submitted by BSS Design on behalf of Tim Verslyke and Patricia Pinto de Silva for one ninety Fire Tower Lane Road.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Oh.
Is there prejudice on the preliminary plan?
There is none.
I didn't think it's necessary. And I just, I, I just, I just don't understand why we were doing that.
Well, uh...
Their request.
I think it's a perfectly genuine request and a perfectly collegiate and gracious thing of you to do.
But not necessary. That's what preliminary plans are for, correct?
So they're withdrawing the plan. Do we accept the withdrawal?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
The plan is withdrawn. Okay, next on our, it says public meeting, but in fact, it turns out it is a public hearing. They're about the same. Applicant, Falmouth Boat Storage LLC, continued. Site plan application to construct a new additional building and storage area for the construction of boats and a boatyard located at five fifty East Falmouth Highway. Who is speaking to this?
Um, my name's Michael McGrath, and I, I realized today that I had not submitted some of the revised materials, uh, appropriately. So it's more appropriate that we open the hearing, but I asked for continuance. but I asked for continuance, and I have here copies for the staff and for you, because with everything that's going on, I just missed the deadline.
It's like a blessing tonight, thank you.
Don't give us that.
Right, that's great.
Sounded like a motion to continue to October twelfth.
Yeah, motion to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We have revised the plan several differently to details, but I just wanted to.
I'd like it when we see it, thank you.
And with your permission, I'll now give you all a package.
Give it to them.
Thank you.
They continue to.
Moving on.
Yeah, the twelfth of October.
The twelfth?
To the twelfth. Okay, that concludes the public hearing and meeting section of this meeting. Announcements, does anyone have an announcement? No.
Have a new grandchild?
Is this the same new grandchild you had last time?
Say it again, Peter Martin Doherty, I said it twice.
We're just talking about not repeating yourself.
Two weeks.
How's he doing?
Great.
What does he weigh today?
He gained eight ounces since his last, that's about eight pounds, that was getting bigger.
Doing well, right, he's taking on weight.
Sorry I missed it.
Okay, so from here, general correspondence, I think the correspondence we had related to the matters in hand, I don't think we had any other, I don't see a purple folder. Am I missing anything?
There's a purple folder that has about that much data.
Ah, we've already done it. Future agenda items, I have a couple. One is coastal resiliency. Tom handed out, you already all got a copy of the coastal resiliency Paul's report, and Charlie McCaffrey, who chaired that committee, has asked to come give us a special presentation just for us on what can we do about it? Are there changes that would be good things to be thinking about for the future? What can we do about it? So I'd like him to be on a future agenda.
Love it.
Is that okay?
And I had talked about, and I'm pretty sure we talked about this today, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
About doing that in November.
Right.
Because you've got town meeting coming up and a couple other things, so having Charlie McCaffrey, I'm pretty sure I copied Paul on it since he has been our liaison to the coastal resilience.
Right, and Paul, if you wanted to, we probably already are in, because this was Charlie on the presentation.
Well, the chairman, I think it's appropriate to give the presentation.
Ah, okay.
So, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that he can use, and I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, great, it's not the one that he used the other night for the Democratic Town Committee, he said he had a special, is making a special one just for us. Okay, and one other thing that I have asked to put back on the agenda, I hope it doesn't surprise you, is the issue of fifty-three G. And that is where we would potentially, if we ever approved it, that we would agree, we would require projects, the engineering on projects to reviewed by an outside engineer, third-party engineer paid for by the developer. You remember that one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and you wonder why is this coming back? This, this doesn't die, it's got a vampirish existence, and the reason is, have you noticed how there are all these comments coming from the engineering department? And they say strange things, you know, up to you, up to you, up to you, like, they stopped advising us on what would be a good thing to do. And I guess that's partially a reaction to, you know, not having this third party. So by way of having the engineers come and talk to us about that, I ask for it to be back on the agenda. So whoever the engineering department decides to send, their department head, will come talk about it.
You know when that will be?
I do not, but I should know because I was told.
Well, likely that would be, and Peter McConerty and I talked about him coming in in February, so likely we've targeted October, and it may be with the things we've got going on with town meeting, it may be after that, but I had asked them to put something together and come to talk to the board about their process and what's going on for an October twenty-six meeting, so that last meeting in October. But once again, that's sort of a save the date sort of thing, because we may still have engaged in some stuff prior to town meeting.
And the other thing that was particularly requested of them, you remember, a statement was made that we're either one of the few or the only town that doesn't already require this, is some documentation or list of what are the nearby towns, either across the bridge or on the upper Cape, who do require this, you know, let's just get some specificity behind that statement and see what it means.
That was one of the waivers requested from the Santos, that was one of the waivers that they requested. And it's not actually.
It was really from the third party.
Yes.
And it's not actually a waiver that's necessary, because it's not in our subdivision regulations.
And we voted against it the last time we had a vote.
Yep, we did.
Well, I'm going to correct you and say that, no, Pat polled the board and decided we wouldn't have a vote because.
Yeah, with the poll.
Because it was going to go down.
So, once again, late October, early November, we'll bring the Engineering Division in and have a conversation about that.
But Jim is correct in remembering that we all had a pretty negative, we mostly had a negative reaction. He's right about that.
It's been brought up a lot.
Yeah.
I think the engineering period and Tom have brought this up at every single time they can.
Well, this was at my request, not theirs.
I understand, no, I understand, but just, in fact, they've, even though we voted against it, they still were inserting it into things, we had to say, no, it's not part of it, but it's just a difference of opinion, that's what they want, and let's.
Well, my thought is, let's have them come.
Sure.
Instead of putting Tom in the middle, let's hear from them.
It just, just costs developing more money, whatever.
Well, maybe they ought to hear from us, too, as to what our objections are.
We'll be able to have a conversation.
Yeah.
I agree, it's on the agenda, that's what we should be talking about then, not now.
Yeah, John?
So when Mr. McConerty comes here and it's on the agenda, will this board take public comment from people in the audience, if there are people here?
Last meeting comment also.
I'm just saying, if there's other engineers here, or attorneys, or developers, or people of interest, will they be able to ask Mr. McConerty questions, ask the board questions?
I mean, should we turn into a school?
Or is it just going, I'm asking?
Yeah.
Or is it just going to be, he will speak and we will reply or ask questions?
What's your preference?
I'm only asking because I've had many phone calls about this.
Oh.
Because the word got out that it may happen, so I've had, I never get phone calls, I have received many phone calls of interest.
Is it your sense we're going to be inundated with engineers?
I don't want to say that.
Oh.
I don't have a sense. I'm asking, I'm just asking what will be the protocol for the meeting.
So in order to have public input, there would have to be a hearing, wouldn't it?
It would.
And it would be a hearing about what? It would be a hearing whether we adhere to this policy?
Yeah.
Or eliminate it? Is that what the hearing would be about? And the hearing should be about something that we have to decide on.
The hearing would be about whether or not we should adopt fifty-three G, that's what the hearing is about, and to hear the pros and cons on it. So John's question is, do we only hear ourselves and the engineer department or others? Pat?
I think we ought to hear from the people it affects.
I think so, too.
Because I think without that, engineering just has their own concept, and we've said no, because we have our own concept, and I believe that if we hear from the people who are affected, it will inform them and inform us better to make our own decision.
Paul?
Yeah, I think this is an item for the future agenda. Last night at the select board meeting, there was a lengthy discussion on the use of consultants, and they talked about the planning board involvement and non-involvement and everything, it was pretty extensive, and maybe now's not the time to do it, but when you're ready, we probably should talk about this on the agenda. It was late in the evening.
About consultants, you mean? Well, let's add that as a future agenda item.
Before I fell asleep.
Yeah.
And what we can do with our crack research team, thank you, Jeb, is to go take a look at that selectmen's meeting, find the link, find out where it's at in the meeting, just send you a copy of the link and say, here's the link for the meeting, go to fourteen hours and fifteen minutes in the selectmen's meeting, hear what they're talking about.
Thank you.
It was late, it was ten forty-five, maybe.
Well, it was past your bedtime.
We're getting there.
John?
One final comment from myself. When I hear that other towns or all the other towns are doing this, I hear my father say to me when I was about twelve years old, if your friend jumps off the bridge, does that mean you have to jump off the bridge, too?
Right, it's like a challenge.
And that's, and that's all I have to say.
Parental wisdom, I got the same kind of thing.
So there's a reason when you drive along the beach that they have that sign, don't jump off the bridge.
Right, just because your dad said.
But it's a fun thing to do.
Unless all of your friends jump off the bridge first.
Okay, move to adjourn?
But Paul wants to say something.
I'm sitting here tonight looking at the audience, and we spent forty minutes talking about the recertification, which was really important, but I'm looking at the audience, and there's several consultant, consulting engineers, several attorneys, all sitting here waiting for their turn up. If you want to save money for development and whatnot, that's an area that spends a lot of money, because they get paid for sitting here waiting for their turn to go up. So maybe we should think about organizing the agenda such that we minimize the time that people have to sit in the audience, and the stuff that pertains solely to the planning board come later on in the program.
And originally, the agenda did just that. Then the expectation was that Bob and Bob were going to be here with us, and they have a long way to drive to get here and to go home, and therefore, we should put them first in consideration, so we moved them up, but a very late-breaking part of this is, they didn't come. So this, this was a patch-up, and we couldn't change the agenda by then, but you're quite right. So who moved to adjourn?
I did.
Was there a second? Is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.